I'm gonna call the meeting to order at this point. The Select Board for the date of September 10th of 2018. Remind people we are being recorded. While the acoustics have improved in here, it's still worthwhile speaking up so all can hear. Identify yourself and your residence. We do have a quorum tonight. Alice is not present as she's traveling out of the country. So I will begin with the consent agenda. We have the town accountant warrants. The Sunday entertainment license for Emerson Umbrella for September 23rd, 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., 40 Stowe Street Theater. Gift acceptance, linear retail of $1,030.50 to the Cafe Nero Bike Rack Gift Account. And one day special licenses, A.B. United Way for December 1st, 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., 246 Ornac, all alcohol. The Concord Women's Chorus on November 3rd, 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., 81 Elm Street Wine and Malt. Rotary Club of Concord, September 29th, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., 11 Wheeler Road Wine and Malt. The Salt Box Farm, September 22nd, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., 40 Westford Road Wine and Malt. Emerson Umbrella, September 21st and September 22nd, 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., 57 Ornac Wine and Malt. And also Emerson Umbrella, September 23rd, 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., 57 Ornac Wine and Malt.
I will do accept the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yep. Chris, Town Manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Relative to the state primary election last Tuesday, the town clerk reported that more than 40% of Concord's registered voters turned out to vote.
Is that a record?
I don't know if it should mention whether there's a record. Very high turnout for a primary. But the race for the third congressional seat among the Democratic candidates is close with Lori Reddhan holding a 130-vote lead currently. And it looks likely that a recount for that seat will be required.
They announced that today.
They did. Okay.
And that is at the town's expense is what we have to do for the recount.
That's right.
Every town, right?
Each town, right? For their own recount.
And it shouldn't be too expensive because we have the electronic voting backed by a doctor.
And I think there's a lot of volunteers who participate in it.
Relative to the October 1st special town meeting, the 13 article warrant is back from the printers. It will be in mailboxes tomorrow before the public hearing on Wednesday, which is scheduled for 7:00 p.m. in the hearing room of the townhouse. This will be the first try of the new video and audio equipment in the hearing. That goes well. There's a joint meeting of the West Concord Advisory Committee and the Planning Board tomorrow night, September 11th. The agenda includes discussion of the planning board's goals for the coming year and potential bylaw amendments for the West Concord zoning districts that might be considered the annual town meeting in April. The CSEC, Citizens Sustainable Energy Committee, is hosting an electric vehicle showcase at Walden Pond on Saturday, the 15th. Folks can try out, test drive, electric vehicles and learn a lot more about them. State is trying to promote, and our local committee is trying to promote electric vehicle ownership.
And aren't we the new owner of?
Of an electric vehicle paid for by the Green Communities grant parked out behind this building, available for staff to drive during the day. Delia, who is accepting bids, Delia, the Natural Resources Director, for the construction of a three-car parking lot behind the Citizens Bank on West Concord at 36A Baker Avenue for picnic area and community lunch. All bids will be open on Wednesday. Cambridge Turnpike reconstruction is getting started in earnest this week. And probably you'll see lane closures and laying up hay bales.
No, like, raining?
It's, well, probably, it probably is about Thursday, they expect the water lines, to start with water line construction, so there will be disruption. Kaiserwood Parking Lot, the west side closest to the Barrow Ground, was paved this week. And reconstruction of the east sidewalk will begin later this week. Verizon is on your agenda for the 24th as you're moving over there. Relative to the Giraud land, two public forums have been planned. One was held on a very hot night, August 28th, and the 58 attendees were there and a lot of good comments were received. The second forum was originally scheduled for the 17th September, but the Assistant Town Manager suggesting it be postponed until after the special town meeting allowed some more time for the comments to be evaluated. And so the intended rescheduled date is Tuesday, October 16th at 7:00 p.m. in the hearing over the townhouse. Commonwealth Avenue and Main Street intersection, we heard a lot about. We got about a dozen emails and a few phone calls expressing concern about the intersection geometry as a result of the Blue Stream and Rail Trail changes. We have been in touch with the state's design engineer from Greenman Peterson and came up with a suggestion that perhaps four feet could be cut off that curb, which would allow tractor trails. Fire engines are fine, school buses, those types of vehicles are getting through okay. It's the large tractor trailers that might go up onto the sidewalk and perhaps endanger pedestrians if the geometry's left as it is. So we are going to be suggesting, we think, that Mass DOT shave off about four feet. It may still have an impact on two parking spaces in front of Woods Hill Table Restaurant, where the larger vehicles also cannot negotiate in that area, making that turn.
That would be at their cost, anything?
That's our fault. They're paying for all of it. They paid for the design, and it really didn't work when they redid the design with the larger vehicles in mind, which clearly doesn't work. Pam Hill has announced her plans to step down from the Mass Port Community Advisory Committee after four years of service. So we'll be looking for someone to sit on that community advisory committee and advise both the Mass Port Board and the governor on matters concerning Mass Port activities, specifically Hanson Field in our area.
Whose appointment was it?
The town manager's. The biennial citizen survey will be mailed out on September 20th. One survey per household, but citizens can respond either online, filling out the form in writing, or calling. And the finance department staff will take down people's comments in response to the survey. The Home Labor Department will host it. Household has its Waste Collection Day on the 19th, September 19th, from 4:00 to 7:00. It's usually very popular, sometimes over 100 cars visit. The Harvey Wheeler Centennial Celebration is Friday, the 21st, at 6:30 at Harvey Wheeler Center. And lastly, Fire Chief Tom Judge's Emergency Management Director is keeping an eye on the hurricane. Hopefully it stays south of us, but it may probably get some rain out of it if it turns to north. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody have any questions, sir? Thank you. I have a couple. First of all, it was notified by the Boy Scout Troop 132 that there are two members of the Concord community, Will Duggan and Michael John Flannery, who have been able to reach the, as an Eagle Scout, and with the board's permission, I will write on each a letter of congratulations. The letter of support for the application for the EPA award regarding the Envision Concord Plan has been sent out in a timely manner, and a copy was included in the footboard.
And that's really important because we are one of the, well, we're the first town in Massachusetts, and we're probably, I think we're the only town of our municipality of our size to have fulfilled the EPA sustainability requirements, or there are new practice guidelines under long-range planning.
I think if the state does encourage communities, or reward communities who are inactive in doing these things, so hopefully it'll benefit us.
Absolutely.
I also think it's important, we did get a notice from the Mass Department of Public Health that the West Nile virus has been detected and mosquitoes collected in Concord, so be on the lookout. I gather Ag Day on Saturday was successful. We had a substantial presence from the Select Board. And just announced that October 20th, there's going to be a forum on effective governance for the town committees, boards, and commission volunteers. With that, we have proceed to our meeting. Two, I think, main articles are the special town meeting articles and the dog feasibility study. But we will proceed with the public hearing scheduled for 7:05, which is petition of the Concord Municipal Light to relocate utility pole at 5 Kaiser Road in accordance with plan dated August 29th, 2018, filed with the Select Board.
I move to open public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening.
Good evening. Jeff Cosgrove, structural engineer from the Town of Concord Light Department, Town Manager, Chair, members of the board, Mr. Marra. I'm here with myself and?
Jim White, owner of Concord Market.
We're here to present, just along Kaiser Road, this is part of the Concord Market project, and is a streetlight. It's classified as utility pole number five. There are no overhead cables or conductors along the road at this time, but what's left there is the streetlight. And with the new Concord Market project and the existing and proposed parking lot and structure, we're looking to relocate the pole to make way for the new parking area, about 25 feet approximately west of its existing location.
I see the petition. It looks as if everything was in order, and I don't know whether there are any questions of any member of the board. It's interesting, we have to go through this process, it's a good idea to do so.
The migrating utility poles.
Exactly. I don't know if there are any public comments. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I have a question, Mr. Roy. When this march is done?
I knew you were gonna ask that question. We're hoping to open it sometime this month.
Great.
It's looking, coming along.
The architects did a wonderful job on the building.
And I assume that this light will shed, this pole will shed more light on the parking area?
Yes.
Yes, at the entrance area.
Correct.
Now the motion?
Okay. I move to grant permission to install overhead coaxial cable to be owned by Comcast of Massachusetts. I jumped to the wrong one?
Yeah.
All right. I move to grant permission to relocate the utility pole, 5 Kaiser Road, to be owned by Concord Municipal Light, as requested in the petition plan number 08292018, received August 29th, 2018, and subject to conditions recommended by the Concord Public Works and Concord Municipal Light Plan.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Roy.
Stand by next.
Sure.
Now we?
I attended a twofer.
Have another public hearing, a grant of location Comcast of Massachusetts 3, Inc. for installation of coaxial cable from utility pole 23, Old Bedford Road, to utility 4, 4 Merriam Road.
I move to open public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Greg Franks, on behalf of Comcast, and I'm here in support of our petition to place overhead coaxial cables to serve 120 Merriam Road, and we would be running them from utility pole 23 on Old Bedford Road.
Excuse me, can I ask you to speak up? I'm throwing out a hearing, and so without, would you speak a little louder?
Not at all. I don't mind at all. My petition is to place overhead coaxial cables from utility pole 23 on Old Bedford Road to utility pole number four on Merriam Road to serve the property at 120 Merriam Road, which is a town elementary school.
This is the recalculation.
It's my understanding that a site walk occurred on Friday, perhaps with Mr. Cosgrove?
That's correct.
I have had an opportunity to see the proposed conditions, which are the usual conditions, and of course Comcast is prepared to fulfill them completely. And I welcome any questions that you might have.
Just for the record, the precondition was the pre-hearing site visit, which I understand you said just has already occurred. There's a, be installed using common industry standards, and minimum separation and clearance requirement is described by the most recent National Electric Safety Code. Must be maintained between Comcast infrastructure and existing overhead facilities. The applicant must remove any infrastructure deemed obsolete as a result of this project. And as-built plans must be provided to the Concord Public Works and Concord Light Plant Engineering prior to the final close out of the project. Those are all what your understanding were?
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any other questions?
Can I just ask a question? The school administration's under the impression this is fiber optic cable, but the petition's for coax?
Well, what's on the pole is gonna be coaxial cable. What actually goes into the building may be fiber optic.
Okay, so what's going on in the pole is coax? Okay. And this is after request from the school administration, there needs a network connection of their school buildings.
Does the public have any comments?
I do indeed.
Okay. Please, if you would come forward and identify yourself.
John Quinn, 46 Merriam Road. And 04 is directly in front of my house. I had Verizon for a long time, and I had serious problems with my internet. So a couple months ago, I went with Comcast and said, and my phone usually doesn't work. So anything you can do to make that a little bit better. Internet, we have a lot of problems. TV, we have some problems. My phone, I don't know, people don't call us on the phone anymore because that's just not working. So anything you can do to make that situation better.
Like, no, people stop calling you.
For a lot of reasons, perhaps. But anyway, you know, it's a lot of that.
Have you called Comcast, and what do they say?
I think Comcast really does try, but they're just not able to really resolve problems. It's like so much of, you know, Governor Riffin, he call, they try to help, but they really, really can't. They're really, they're better than Verizon, they try a little better, but they just don't have it. And if you can make my phone work, God help us, that would be wonderful. So I'm just, I'm leaving here right now, but make pole four work if you could. And I'd be happy to have you make a phone call for me, whatever you can.
I see you took note of that, appreciate that. So whatever you can do, obviously, you'd have more than one person happy about it.
Especially as the host of 04.
Anybody else have a comment? That I would?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we now have another motion.
I move to grant permission to install overhead coaxial cable to be owned by Comcast of Massachusetts 3, Inc. as requested in petition plan marked aerial cable placement request, received August 20th, 2018, and subject to conditions recommended by Concord Public Works and Concord Municipal Light Plan.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. We now move to number seven, which is change of operation, Rapschallian 208 Pittsburgh Turnpike. This is not a public hearing, just needs the approval of the board. We have, within the package, a change of operation of the hours. I think Sunday, they're opening a half hour earlier. And it will be opened on Monday, their hours at 11:30 to 11:30 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. Among the documents we've received was police approval, that they're in compliance with tip, and no recorded violations.
And what doesn't show is what this is a move from?
The change of operations, the above items, current operation.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was, I was, so they really don't?
It's just staying open on Monday, or opening on Monday and coming a, it looks to be a half hour earlier on both Sunday, Saturday and Sunday.
And how many other restaurants are open at 11:00 a.m. that serve alcohol in Concord?
The vast majority.
Vast majority?
Yeah. Yeah, nothing, there's nothing unusual with this request. I spoke to the police department, they've reported no violations there. All the bartenders have the updated tips alcohol service training. And I also spoke to Susan Rass, the health director, and she saw no issue with food service at that time as well.
So it looks like they're doing well.
I don't know, any, the public have any comment on this? Otherwise, I guess we are ready to have a vote on this.
Okay. Move to approve change of hours for Rapschallian Restaurant located at 208 Pittsburgh Turnpike.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We now amend the, number eight, amend entertainment license of Trail Inn Cafe, 97 Lowell Road, for a one-time event. And it sounds like there's going to be soft, live, or recorded music, guest speakers, bar games, such as trivia. And we do have a document which shows the floor plan, the details of the event, and the crowd control manager.
Is this the annual dancing?
Well, I'm not sure if it's annual, but it seems?
Well, I seem to remember it before, and I kind of love it.
And I would, we also have the fire chief's approval of this.
Can I ask a question? That's substantially to do with, it has to do with why this isn't, is there a reason this doesn't show up on the consent agenda as a one-time?
It could. It just didn't.
Any other comments or questions, anybody? If the public have any comments or questions? Not seeing many, we're ready to have a motion.
I move to amend entertainment license for Trail Inn Cafe located at 97 Lowell Road to allow for one-time dancing event on September 15th, 2018, in accordance with the request submitted September 4th, 2018. Approval is in accordance with the following condition. One, a crowd manager in compliance with Massachusetts Fire Code 527 CMR 1, Section 20.1.5.6.1, shall be present at the event.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I think probably because of this crowd control manager issue, it makes some sense to at least have it.
Well, I don't want to, a lot wasted on the timer tonight, but, you know, there are other things. For example, when there's no opposition to some of these public works against, and we had somebody, but you really was complaining about what was on the agenda. It seems to me, if there's no real issue, and everybody's in agreement?
So if the hearing is required, you have to?
Yeah, but to hear it.
But in this case, it was the dancing, the hearing was not required.
We are now ready to move to item number nine, the review of the Dog Park Feasibility Study Committee preliminary report. I see we have a number of members of the committee. I don't know who will be addressing us, but I see the chair present, people pointing at her. Please come forward, Ann, if you would.
All right, well, I think it'll be a sort of a group effort, but I will certainly step forward.
So? Identify yourself.
Ann Umfree, 468 Old Bedford Road, Chair of the Concord Dog Park Feasibility Study Committee. By the time this ends, I'll have that rolling off my tongue. And we were tasked by you folks early in this year to look into the issues and feasibility of having dog parks in Concord, whether it was a good idea. I think you have the, you have that in your packet, the charge to us. And we've been moving along, looking at the various aspects. And we had our first hearing for the public to ask for questions from them, what they think about dogs, dog parks, et cetera, in Concord. And we have come up with our preliminary report, thanks to several of our members who have worked diligently to put this together. And we are now tasked with bringing our preliminary report to you to review, to ask us questions. And then we're going to be going to the public also for another hearing, to sort of present this to the public, again, see what they have to say, and then come up with a final, hopefully by early December, so we get this all wrapped up before the holidays.
Well, as a liaison from the Select Board, I may be biased, but I thought it was a terrific report, very thorough, and I think the work that you all did was very thorough, so I'm very appreciative. I will open it up for others to question, and they have different issues that they would like to raise.
I saw a spread report, thank you, and all the members.
Everybody can, they have?
Nice for a meeting, right to the point, don't fool around. Have you set a date for the public hearing yet?
Well, we wanted to?
Funny you should ask.
Yeah, funny you should ask. We wanted to have it on October 24th, but I was told, I think that's 15, 7, it's 24, yes. But I was told by the town manager's office that the, all the various places that we would ask to have this meeting, they have put in the ballot boxes already for the midterm elections. So they're not eager to have us have a hearing there at that time. The other thought, we originally thought about October 15th, but that's?
17.
17, thank you. All right, sorry. That's putting, see how great my committee is? Anyway, so, but that is a little bit short on time for some of the things we might want to do, is if you have a lot of questions, comments to review, and so on and so forth. I don't, we haven't really, because this came up recently, we haven't had a committee meeting to decide whether we might want to move it to early November or not. So that's the long answer for the short answer, is we don't have a definitive date. So I could poll them right now, I suppose we're in a?
No, I was just, if you had one, it was just a chance to announce it, so.
I wish we could, I wish we could, so.
What was the, what was the level, if any, of public attendance at your meetings? I'm just trying to gauge what level of?
In our actual meetings?
Yeah, because they're open meetings, and I was just curious as to how much?
Seven total. Seven members of the board.
It'd probably be helpful if you come up and?
Actually, I guess, several of us, if most of you want, we could all?
Why don't you pull your chairs up if you need to?
Since we're a real team here, everybody has?
Suzanne Jarred, 61 Hubbard, speaking as a member of the committee. We had, I believe, seven members of the public attend, two of whom left after discovering that we were not actually presenting our findings in the meetings. So it was very little public attendance.
But you had more when you had your public hearing?
Oh, yes.
The boardroom was about 35?
Yes. We did have, we tried to publicize it quite widely. We had 35 folks come, so.
Just, just not only for the record, but so, I know?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Any other folks touched, who they are?
Sure. I'm Deborah Richardson, 57 Harrington Avenue.
I'm Bob Schulman, 68 Main Street.
I'm Kate Stoudt, 266 Main Street.
And as, as our Select Board Chair said, that he is our liaison, so, the committee.
Is this the total committee?
No, we are missing two members. Jeff Young had to be out of town, and, and Tom?
No, Don.
Don, I mean, Don Shobert, who is our, who is our wonderful clerk? Yes, clerk. And he has been instrumental. Let me just say that Suzanne looked at possible sites for dog parks, and everybody had a big role, a big hand in this. Kate was our wonderful wordsmith, who typed all this up, and did our editing and?
So can I ask you, when I read the report? So can I ask you, when I read the report, and as I said, I thought it was, well, you know, really well done, it sounded like a final report.
Right.
Which, fine, I got a problem with that. But could you let us know what, in your view, are the issues or the points that you are still, I don't mean uncertain about, but the ones where something might change if the public had something to say about it, one way or the other?
Well, we're so, you know, open to, people have expressed strong feelings, some people have expressed strong feelings about whether they wish to have a park or not a park. And as, as we said, we had not had very many people attending at the hearing or our meetings. We really wanted to try to, again, publicize this next meeting, so that people do have something they want to say about whether dog, whether they favor a dog park. The other thing that is still up in the air, that I'll say, is actually finding a location, not only deciding what's an optimal, I think we did mention what we've considered an optimal size, but in order to find properties that might be useful for that. So I guess that's what we wanted to hear from you, what you thought we should be looking, if there's more that we should be looking at, or things that we have not done.
Well, I would agree with, and it's good to hear this, because I read this and, you know, it seemed to be, it's hard, a decision was made, or at least offered, and, which is why I asked about the level of attendance, because it seems to be, lack of community interest was cited as the main reason you were recommending against a dog park in Concord.
You wanted the main reason.
Well, okay, I just, it was the first one that, was the first front and center, so, and I don't want to mislead the, the public who's watching, but the fact you also mentioned the need for a site and financing.
Financing is a strong...
I think the cost is, the cost to the Concord taxpayer was significant enough to make us all think, is there, given the lack of community support, is it really something that Concord wants to spend a quarter of a million dollars at a minimum?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I think I boom anyway, so. But I think that was one of our considerations, and I think the idea that this may appear like a final report, is only that we really, at least, I think I'm speaking for us, we really weren't sure what was the procedure, what was the process. We're all fairly new to this, and we knew that we needed to present a report to you tonight, and so we did.
And I thought, one of the things that I liked about the report is that there was enough information in the report, that if in the future there did seem to be a lot of community interest, you had, they could just come to the report, and an awful lot of the work has already been done. You know, some of it might need to be updated, but kind of the process is such that anybody who's going to be reviewing in the future to put in either multi-use or a standalone dog park would have most of the information here.
Yeah, and I think the careful review of potential property was, would be really helpful, no matter what happened. We've got a fairly good sense of where the property is, and what it would be like, and the pros and the cons, and so, you know, that's kind of something I think that's very important when, when we will accept a report, and then we have to, you know, figure out what the heck to do. But, but I think that would really be helpful to us.
Well, if I may say, just very quickly, we had a lot of input from various town, people involved in town that the...
Town managers.
Town manager, and the...
Recreation.
Oh, recreation, and the town planner. And they were most helpful in giving us a lot of information, very...
Marcia showed how to use the computers, did all the, you know, various sites, and kind of get a real learning.
So we have a great thank you, a shout out, shall we say, to, to the town employees for really all the work that they did to make our look at this much easier.
I may, I may have missed this when I read the report, and thank you for all the work in the report. Is there someplace where you can find the totals for the report, the survey that went out to the 650 people early on?
That disappeared.
Well, the, the answer is, yes, we can. In the report, we had a link to the survey, but the survey owner had to put up or shut up with another year's rental of the Survey Monkey site, and he decided that...
It was costly.
It was costly, and he'd rather visit his daughter in Australia, so who's to blame him? So I think the answer is, yes, we have hard copies, so it can be scanned.
I think it would be helpful if that was referenced, and also if you...
The whole report.
If, if the link is no longer available, maybe you can summarize all the results and put it in the appendix.
I absolutely can do that. I mean, well, I'm not saying...
I think that would be helpful, because again...
I'm not volunteering.
She's been very good at volunteering. Well, I could just give my copy, and you talk, and you could...
Do you have any, just forming electronic?
No, but it's very, I learned, I learned, it's very easy to do. You take a document, staples it, and poof, they make it into a PDF. It's a miracle.
We have learned so much.
So yes, we can. And I have that survey, so that's, ordinarily, I would be crawling out of the table and heading for the door, but now I know that it's really easy to do. I'm happy to do that. I think the other thing is, this is a very dynamic situation, because every time you turn around, another piece of land pops up. And so, so this is something that is ongoing, and there may be a time that, and maybe between now and December it'll happen, but, but I think largely what we've decided is that, from what we've looked at, there isn't an appropriate site, there isn't the community interest. And I think that if you, if you think that this is dynamic, and so this is, if we've done nothing else, we hope we did what Thomas suggested, which is give a basis for future consideration, where someone didn't have to reinvent this wheel. If there's if in the future, next month, next spring, 10 years from now, there's an interest in a, in a dog park, they've got something to go from, it's not starting over.
Yeah, it seems like it's a really good looker. I mean, you've really done the renderings for what to look for. And as you said, I, you know, we are a very grateful town, because we get, there's a lot of land that moves in and out of public ownership, and that's, if it will.
I think the other point that was important is the cost factor is somewhat balanced by the interest factor. If you get a lot of volunteers, the cost goes down, and it probably has a better result as well, because you have the people who are utilizing it, being involved in the running of it, so...
Also, the other side of volunteers is that, is that towns or communities that have workable dog parks have continuing involvement from, from those groups as well. And that offsets town, needs for town resources, and also it just makes for a better experience.
So I would encourage you to think about a November date, because I think it's going to be very important to try to get as much participation as you can at your next public hearing. And so we should, we should even think a little bit, maybe you folks could think along with Tom, as ways that we could publicize this, because I think it's, you know, it's an important thing, and for us to get right, and it would be, I think, too bad for you to have done all the work you did, and then after the report comes out, you'd be like, what are you talking about? I'm real interested in that. So I would hope, would give us as much time as we can to keep that going.
Very good point.
And then, when you get ready to write your final reports, the only, the only comment I would have here is the, I, I had no idea that there were five or seven people from the public. If I read this, I would have thought there was a lot of public input, and the public was affirmative about what they wanted.
Well, it is in the report, only seven.
Well, I must have missed, but...
It's hard to know what the stress, but I think the, the, the reason we put so much emphasis on the, in the report on community involvement is that there was so little.
I don't know.
We knocked ourselves out to, to advertise the first public hearing, and I would say that the people who showed up came with an agenda. They definitely came with an agenda, wouldn't you say?
Yes.
And they, and the broader public doesn't seem to be interested in, and I would say they absolutely should be, because they're the taxpayers. They absolutely should be, and we can't get them some, for some reason.
Well, no, it, it's perfectly possible that the public is saying they have no interest in this topic.
Right.
It is interesting. Those who are interested are very interested. It can be a hot button topic with some people. But we don't, even a lot of, I forgot what the exact numbers of dog owners, but even a lot of the dog owners don't, that doesn't come high on their radar about a dog park, or walking dogs, or where they can and cannot walk dogs. But where people are interested, they're really interested, so, and I don't know how to just inform the rest of the public that they should be thinking about this.
Yeah, if I may add that, for those people, Ann's absolutely right, those people for whom it's, they're interested, they're very, very interested. And I think it's, it needs to be said, as well as written, that largely they were interested in resisting being cut off from Concord open lands. They were, they were resistant to being told, they were afraid that if there were a dog park, then that would be the only place they could take their dogs, and that it would lead to further exclusion from Concord's vast supply of open lands.
So you think that there's a fundamental misperception, that a dog park is linked to access to open land for dog owners?
I don't know that I've caught a misperception, but I, but there absolutely is a, a resistance to the idea of a dog park, purely a strong resistance to the idea of a dog park, if it furthers the elimination of off-leash walking in Concord open land. And one of the points we make in this, in this report is that that's been a privilege of Concord residents since time immemorial. It's, it's been a privilege, and I think there's, there's a very high resistance to having that revoked, or cut off, or little by little choked off. And to be choked into a dog park is a lot of people's fear.
But that was never the charge, is my point. It had nothing to do with the charge of the committee, or the...
No, but it's, it is one of the things that, out of all our, our research and our, well, even our research, not our research, but our...
Meetings.
Our meetings, our discussions with the public at all. If they were interested, they were interested in that.
The hearing, the people who attended the hearing were fairly specific, that that was a major concern, no matter how much one was able to try to dislay them that that was going to happen. Nobody could give an absolute guarantee that it wouldn't.
And...
It was in the context of other issues that had been going on in the town.
It doesn't, I would, it doesn't surprise me, but I just wanted to stress that we really aren't talking about it.
No, that's not our official charge, exactly.
No, it's not our official charge, but it's what came to us from the public, you know? We can't control that. So in, in writing our report, we felt we had to reflect that very, very, very...
Corretive thought.
What?
It's a fear.
Corretive thought, yeah.
I mean, people stopped me in the grocery store if they knew that I was a member of the committee, and just said, you know, what's, what's up, what's going on? Or they would just volunteer if I was walking my dog, then they would, somebody would say, and they would just volunteer. That, that was their big, big concern. Yes, our thing was really specifically with the feasibility of putting a dog park in Concord, but we really felt, as Kate said, that we need to reflect what the people say about dog parks, their fears.
One of the questions I have, is your, one of your recommendations is the formation of a freestanding committee to serve as a liaison between town interests and dog-related concerns in Concord. Is that a committee, I mean, if there's not an interest in a dog park, do you think there would be an interest in such a committee?
Certainly among dog owners, absolutely.
And is that something that would be better done by the dog owners, instead of a committee of their own? Or is that something that you see kind of the select board monitoring or appointing?
That's a good question. I think that's something that we would want to discuss. Some communities have, like Arlington, has a very strong dog committee, and I think Gloucester's another one that comes to mind.
Carlisle has one as well.
Carlisle. And, and I think those are private that were set up, some, some towns set up a private one, and they do funding of building a dog park, and maintenance. I mean, when we talk about how much to set up a dog park, the other issue is ongoing maintenance.
Well, and education.
And education.
Education, yeah. I think, I also think that the way that that kind of committee would work best would be in concert with the town, a real handshake with the town, so that if there are dog issues, whatever they may be, they could be addressed in a, in a, in a, within the committee, but also with the town as a participant in that.
So, but I also just want to be really clear that I'm hearing something getting blended here, because I see dog related, again, in the, in the interest of this...
Can you go to page, please?
I'm sorry, page 14, the formation of a freestanding committee to serve as a liaison between town interests and dog-related concerns in Concord. That's, maybe I'm misunderstanding it, but that would seem to be a different committee than a dog park. In other words, that's a broader mission?
Yes.
And I just want to, again, clarify that the mission right now would have nothing to do with broader dog-related concerns.
Correct.
Absolutely, and that's why it's...
Open lands, any of that.
Which is, I think, why we were recommending that as a separate committee.
Right, so that would be a separate charge, a wholly different...
Exactly.
But that could also kind of keep an eye on interest in the future.
Right.
And I think so. I don't think we need to continue as a committee beyond this report.
And might create a trust among the dog owners, if you will, so that in the future there wouldn't be this perception that it's being used, a dog park's being used to somehow cut off other rights.
That's what I understand the value, I just wanted to be really clear now.
Well, I think that's where it says not feasible at the present, future, and what may arise, at which time the idea could be revisited. In the meantime, this committee recommends. So it's, it's kind of a, you know...
I would certainly put that in as an addendum, if you don't want it in the body of the committee.
Again, I just want to, because, because one of the conversations here was about this confusion about goals and charges, I don't, I don't want, you know, I want to make sure that we're still, because we're talking about different sets of goals.
Yeah, good.
I also think this recommendation was meant to, as a way to carry on and, and to invest in a spirit of cooperation, as opposed to divisiveness, to, to bridge that gap.
Right.
And, and I think that this, this freestanding committee idea was really just a way, was a, and is a good idea for doing just that, for, for having town and citizen cooperation over an issue, rather than divisiveness, that has really, it has been a hot button issue, as we all know, and we'd all like to see that there would be more compromise, more reconciliation, rather than divisiveness. I think that's been our, one of the things, because this, it isn't our charge, but it's come at us everywhere.
Yes, question? Does anybody in the public like to make a comment about this, or?
I'd like to make a comment. Mark Ayers, 63 Prescott Road. So I'm not a dog owner, but I, you know, follow this to some degree. I think it's really an excellent piece of work by the committee, and I think it really informs some of us who may not have had direct information. Just throwing out a couple thoughts that might help either the committee or the, or the board. It's interesting to notice the, you know, kind of surprising lack of interest, although some people had initially expressed a lot of... although some people had initially expressed a lot of interest in it. I think it's pretty clear from the report that there is no ideal site that's jumping out, at least for a large dog park. Even the seven sites that kind of filtered through all have significant negatives for them. And then there's this very significant thing about fear of lack of open space and all that. So I think I could mention a couple of things about these things. One is that, you know, with regard to the lack of ideal site, that's something to think about with future site, you know, future land that comes up that's like not already dedicated to the public use, that this could be kind of a little earmarked for one possible thing. With regard to the design of the park and some of these things, there was a comment made by someone at the public hearing, I think, about the, essentially about dog diversity, that you have small dogs, large dogs, old dogs, active dogs, et cetera. And their needs may be very different. And so in certain areas, the idea of a little pocket dog park restricted to, you know, smaller or less active dogs is very different. And one last thing, with regard to the lack of public engagement, perhaps there are ways, you know, without sort of sponsoring Concord Dog Show or something like that, to think of some dog activities. Again, they maybe have to be segregated effectively for like small, large, old, whatever. But, you know, if you had gatherings under sort of some sponsorship of people, then maybe you would set up this kind of public networking that would be more useful in following things in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a good one.
That was actually something we did discuss on the committee that this, a future committee could, sorry, could participate in and particularly in conjunction with the recreation department or other town groups.
Thank you all very much. Here we continue the great work. We'll look for the final report.
Well, thank you very much.
I encourage you to work closely with Erin Stevens to get the notice out widely. I was excited about that.
Are they, are they notices up all over?
I'm not, but I'm just saying.
No, thank you. And if anybody could, well, it would be very nice if we could put a large article in the Concord Journal or something promoting this too.
That would be so nice.
So, but they're, we, you know, they decide whether they're going to put something in. I think it's valuable, and I'd like to encourage anybody to ask them to think about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving now to the town manager evaluation goals. I think they were distributed at the August 27. I don't know how much of an update, sorry. Was there any questions or comments you might have? Dig in.
There we go. You know, I think routinely, the board in setting their goals tries to do a great job of hitting all the various areas that we're concerned about in town, whether it be the environment, the energy, you know, protecting our historic assets and so forth. But one place that we fall down, I think, routinely, and I, it has to do with how we somehow also incorporate our housing, affordable housing goals. And I'm talking about against a range of affordable housing. And I'm particularly concerned about that, given that the long-range plan has also taken a lot of time to address that particular issue. And I think Chris has captured that in part without naming it by talking about wanting to make sure that these department heads are addressing the goals of the long-range plan. And there was one other place that you also commented that, but it's more in a general way. And just the term affordable housing never comes up. And so the balance and equity and diversity section, for me, is missing that. And I don't always want to be the one who's talking about affordable housing because I feel strongly about all the other aspects that are so important to the characteristics of our town, but I can't help but notice that, given that we just received the report of the long-range plan. So that's my only comment.
Thank you. That's a good comment. I think affordable housing is one of the trickier areas that the board has to...
It is. It is. But when you see we need to, every other area, it's called out and we label it.
So I can modify the goals in that section to include...
What I also was going to say, and the interesting thing is with affordable housing, it's also a horizontal piece. In other words, it would link to many of the other goals.
As it does in the long-range plan.
As it does in the long-range plan. Because to achieve it, you want to tap, open many drawers, and you want it to work within our historic districts and within our, within our open space.
Zoning codes and everything else.
Absolutely.
No, we really, I mean, you're right, it's linked to everything, and I think that's good to have it connected in the book. It also suffers from not having real goals in the area other than, you know, ensuring that we have a percentage of. But when you hear folks in town, you or others who talk about affordable housing, you know, they have very strong views about what kind of affordable housing they want in Concord and where affordable housing should go in Concord. So it isn't just meeting some statistical number.
But I think the planning department in particular, they are so skilled at setting goals in other areas, and they can take the leadership there, I think, and help with this.
Well, I would like to see that we have this committee, the Venderman's Committee, who was tasked with coming up with proposals for how we might create a fund for affordable housing. And I would, I was hoping that when that comes to us, that it would get tied up with trying to come up with some kind of affordable housing goals because of, you know, funding mechanism without something that you're aiming to achieve. You know, I'm sitting out in the audience trying to, you know, I'd want to know, here's what we're trying to accomplish, and here's the financial mechanism we're going to use to get there.
I don't disagree with you at all. But I think it starts with the town manager's goals, that process.
So I think that's a good idea, but I guess I'm also suggesting if we could set a time to have Mr. Venter come talk to us and see if we could get that ball rolling with trying to get the finance and goals for affordable housing articulated. You know, we've got people who are very vocal about it, and they have very clear ideas of what's interesting to them. And, you know, I hate for them to come to loggerheads around a particular event, you know? So try to get some clarity of what we're trying to accomplish. I think that would be a smart thing to do.
And I think that's also, I get a sense that, just like in other areas where there's a lot of passion and a lot of interest, there's also a lot of, I'll say, misinformation or a lack of understanding of the differences between what constitutes an affordable housing that the state would recognize versus what Concord wants. And where we will, you know, there's some really basic, you know, well-meaning, passionate individuals who don't understand the differences.
So that's a good point. And I, you know, I started this conversation by saying I'm talking about the whole range of affordable housing, including what seniors have identified as the many options that they would put, you know, like to see happen and so forth. So for me, it's beyond the state and federal definitions of the 80% and below.
Exactly.
Right.
And the long-range planning committee is sort of laying it out in broad, broad strokes. I think, you know, one of the things we have the obligation to do is now, from that long-range planning report, grab those things that we really want to highlight, get them squared away, and so we can get on with it. So I just like to, just one.
I agree. I think, I mean, it'll be interesting to see how the special town meeting, the discussion on Article 12, which has to do with the affordable housing and the rule of credits acceptance of gifts.
That's a perfect example, because if we had a goal that was well-articulated, people going, "Yeah," then this would be relatively easy. It would be either in line with the goal or it wouldn't. And we wouldn't be having a particular debate around these two units or the Giraudland, that one unit. So I think we really ought to do this, and we're going to keep having these issues that, you know, pinch us against other citizens in town for whom we shouldn't be...
Well, I think it also will make it easier for us to see the opportunities that float by of housing that comes on, you know, into the inventory or on the market, that there might be an opportunity to make a, you know, to put on our list that we hadn't considered before, so.
And it's not just a Concord issue, it's a statewide and in many ways a national issue.
It is. But I know the state... The town is articulated, and it's very important to its long-range plan. It's going to be, you know, we have to get that whole plan on our agenda too. But, you know, as it comes to any of those issues, once we've identified them as the four or five that we really want to focus our attention on, we've got to get a plan, what we've got first, so we can...
Well, I know, Linda, you've sent an email to the chair of the committee, the Affordable Housing Funding Committee, and I've also done so.
Okay, good. Yeah, asking them to finish their report and bring it to us as...
I think initially, at one point, there was some feeling on their part they wanted kind of a preliminary response from us. And I think the feeling was, no, why don't you come to us with your, you're the ones who's looked into this. Come to us with your thoughts, and then we'll, can give you a reaction.
It was, well, yes, my particular concern, I mean, I thought that what we saw, it had a terrific job. But I guess my hope was that doing the hard work that they did to articulate different ways we could go about this, that they would have a point of view about which one they thought, given the town, the finances of the town, we should best consider. And, you know, it's that kind of recommendation in addition to their work, like the dog park, that they did the work, but they also declared, "Don't do it."
So we've attempted to, a new request of that of them, and so that they will wrap up the report and get it to us, yeah.
Good. Thank you. Which does now lead us into the special town meeting articles. Hopefully we all, yeah, we have a very fancy yellow binder here.
Do you have a separate sheet with the list of articles and the likely presenters for the proposed presenters?
Excuse me, question, do we need to take any action on the town manager evaluation?
Actually, it would make sense to either delay adopting, approving the goals until I modify that one or approve with that one.
I would.
And I can give you some language, how would I, what I guess?
And that would also be the town manager evaluation. So I would move that we accept the town manager evaluation and the goals as presented with the addition of articulation to that of affordable housing.
Second.
All those in favor or any comments, or?
My comment is just to commend the town manager for a job well done.
So why don't we? I think we'll take a vote and we'll, all those in favor.
Confrontation or not.
Both. All those in favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I didn't think we could close that conversation.
I've learned through the years that some of Mike's aside's the best left aside.
I tried to whisper something here somehow.
So we'll get, read back to the special town meeting articles. We do have the table of contents, there are 13 of them. So it'll be interesting to see whether we get them all rolled out in one night.
Oh, come on. Let's make our best efforts there. I mean, as long as the schools don't take too long.
Carlisle has scheduled a special town meeting on the following night, Tuesday, which will be a challenge for the Media Network that the town...
Aren't they going to use Concord, Carlisle High School?
No, but they'd have to coverage. We'll have to provide coverage for their town meetings and not just the first day.
So we're learning as we go with our new media.
And in the past, there was only one town meeting could be tablecast live, but I think we're, one could use the government channel, but I think we'll commit one of the other channels to cover it. If we don't finish the first night, both town meetings, town meeting on October 2nd, then we should be able to cover both times.
Whether anybody has any questions or comments about...
And one question I had was on, at the hearing, does the board wish to make any presentations at Wednesday's hearing or at town meeting? I'm happy to make the presentation. School committee is going to cover Articles 6 and 7. I think the school superintendent is going to do the two high school articles. Marcia has agreed to, yeah, the presenter is over there, so she's going to do number three, which is the zoning violation related to the historic race. Number 10, the state grant for transportation services. And the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail 13, I think is Marcia's. But there's two opportunities for the select board to make presentations. If you're interested, then I'm happy to do them as well. One was on the town funding for the town manager search, and the second one is the legal services.
Well, you shouldn't do that.
Okay.
Of course you shouldn't.
I shouldn't. So I'm happy to do any and all those or...
I have a question about the sheet here, and I'm sure it's just my thick head. It says like for Article number one, the presenter is the finance committee. And I don't get it.
Yeah, I think that's a, that should be...
Yeah, I think that this, for diversion was...
So everywhere it says finance committee, it should say town manager.
I think the finance committee has a hearing on it, and I think that...
Yeah, that was carried over, that was carried over from the hearing schedule.
It would be their hearing.
Their hearing, yes, that's where it got carried over from.
I think it probably makes sense, we should put something together, an explanation perhaps on the legal services that are written. I think that will potentially raise some issues and sort of questioning as to, you know, what funds we anticipate and the difficulty of having any certainty in terms of what cost it is.
So I'll plan to do the legal services, and then we'll see what kind of questions we get.
Okay. And then we need to, I assume there'll be a rapid fight over which one. I assume it would be to you, Tom.
Article eight.
Article eight, yeah.
I'm thinking Article 12. Are we ready to move to that point? You know, I heard Marcia say the other day in a meeting that Liz Russ was charged with coordinating all the housing groups. So should she be the one who introduces 12? Either that or Marcia.
So she, Marcia is playing against do three on the zoning question, 10 on transit, and 13 on the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail easement. She wasn't planning to do Black Birch. And I would not be a good choice for that. It's complicated, it'd be challenging for me to explain, I think, but I'm going to do that. So I don't know, whether you'd prefer that I ask Marcia?
Well, I'm hearing Linda ask about Liz Russ.
I'm sorry, Liz. So let me see if Liz can do that.
Yeah.
No.
I don't have any problems with Liz doing it as a person, but she's a regional...
As a director.
As a director, and this is a particular...
Yeah. Lisa and I suggested that, well, it's one because of Marcia's comment the other day that she saw Liz Russ as the person coordinating all the housing groups for the town of Concord. Liz does staff the...
Right, the, the Concord Housing Corporation.
Of which there is a, in Black Birch's interest, so, committee member, so it's...
And she's also a resident in town.
I have no problem with her doing it.
Yeah, that's...
Okay, so I'll answer.
If she's comfortable with not, maybe she has a suggestion. And if she's comfortable with not, maybe she has a suggestion with somebody else.
Right, right.
But it would be accurate to say that the board is the sponsor of the articles.
Yeah.
Yes.
Allow these articles on the, on the line.
I think it's gonna be difficult if there isn't someone introducing that.
Yes, yeah.
That's the only.
Yeah. So is it, so for presenters one through thirteen, is it Chris? Then number two is?
This is also me.
Okay. Marcia.
Marcia.
Chris.
Yes.
Chris. Lori, Lori.
Tom.
Tom. Chris.
Yeah.
Marcia, Chris, Liz.
Marcia. Correct.
Okay.
Need any further discussion or are we all set on that?
Yes, sir, we asked the moderator if there's anything she would, are there two, a couple of articles that she could get on a consent calendar, I mean, I wouldn't do it till after the public hearing, but sure, but.
Is she thinking about that?
Might be thinking about that, if we could get a couple of these rascals out of the way. Let's say this.
Do you wanna just come forward to Tom?
Sure would. Tom Tarby, Chair of the Finance Committee, but speaking on my own behalf. I'm wondering if any of you older government hands could tell me, and I mean of longer.
It's not elderly, but.
If you could tell me where this warrant, this special town meeting warrant falls on the spectrum of warrants in terms of number of articles, is this?
That's the longest special town meeting warrant I've seen, it would be more typical for it to be four or five articles.
Right, so so my question leads to this. I personally have a bias that's not deeply founded for having town business handled at regular town meeting rather than a special town meeting. And are there any actions that we should take if this, maybe this is just an outlier, if if there won't be any trend. But I would hate to see special town meetings start cropping up and.
Yeah, so.
Being, maybe even taking more than one night, which is kind of horrifying. So, just a topic for, it's an open question for discussion.
It's a great question, you know, every, you know, we, we started this because we had a particular article or two that had to get done.
Right.
And then once you open the warrant, you know, there you are.
There, there's no fair way to discourage people from.
Well, you notice there are no citizen.
Citizens.
Citizens, because those, there were some rumblings that there might be, and then we did do a little discouraging in that aspect of it, but.
Well, I'd actually say we encouraged those citizens to think about the value.
Right.
Of annual town meeting as a much bigger communicate, a much bigger discussion.
Right. I'd better express.
I, I think the same comment applies to those in town departments. And so I would think that if, unless there is an overarching reason why something needs to be done on a, an expedited basis, that items should be left to regular town meeting rather than happening at a special town meeting. Thank you.
I think all of the ones that we put forward, that came out of, are directly from us, were things that had to get done. Supplemental appropriations and the eminent domain issues with, with the others, I think, were opportunistic. I don't mean that in a negative way, but to advantage of the fact that we were.
And the historic race, it was decided to do it in three sessions rather than one.
Three hours.
Same thing to a degree with the white fog, but.
But, you know, eight, nine, ten, and eleven are all appropriation funds that were necessary to be done now.
If I could make a little comment on Tarby again. Would it be possible to, to ask the moderator if she could set a schedule for these various warrant articles so that we could perhaps make a very strong attempt to get this done in one night? Kind of limiting debate on certainly less debate worthy topics.
Should be good Wednesday, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make the comment then.
Yeah, definitely.
Great. Move on then to the nomination for Boston Regional Metropolitan Planning Association municipal elections. I believe we've got a document dated August twenty seventh. And these, we usually don't have somebody necessarily from the town to.
It's usually the Chair is authorized to cast a ballot on behalf of the town for, and I'm sorry, a one city candidate and one town, I think, and is it Bedford or, is the question.
Bedford.
I was looking for support.
Right.
Do we want to, then, should there be a motion to that degree to allow such broad discretion in the single individuals?
I move to, to grant the, the Chair of the Select Board the, the, the power to nominate for the Boston Regional Metropolitan Planning Organization municipal election for the town of Concord.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now we move to public comments. Do we have anybody who would like to make a public comment? Please come forward. Good evening, if you can just identify yourself.
Hi, good evening, Jerry Soucy from seven seven zero Main Street. I'm here in my capacity as a death nurse to give you an update on some things we talked about last time we got together in early August. So the event itself is established, the dates are established, the second, the eighteenth, and the thirty first. The speakers, the films, et cetera. The sticky part was a venue, so it's now being held in a private home. Very difficult to find space in town for the same night, or for three nights in the same month, you know, less than six weeks ahead, so, planning better next time. But that also kind of forced kind of a change in the, the structure, I guess, of the event. So if one model is to have an auditorium with a program and people come and fill the seats and you attend and then you leave, this is taking the form more of a, I don't know, a salon or a think tank, that the people attending will be people that we've canvassed, that we've spoken to, and that are interested in this for themselves, but also perhaps in doing something. I mean, an example would be if someone from one of the churches was part of a group that's trying to decide, how do we approach this within our own faith community? Oh, there's this program in Concord, why don't I go to that, see what it's about, and I'll come back, and maybe that'll give us some ideas, or maybe I'll meet some other people who are also interested in this topic. So that's the form that it's taking. In terms of attendees, we're looking at between forty and sixty. So we can handle that comfortably, and it also makes it a more kind of personal intimate discussion, so. One of the reasons I'm here really is to extend the invitation to you, to each of you as members of the Select Board, and through you, town administration, the committees and departments and so forth. Because this is, I think, ultimately a matter for the town. This is a discussion that's taking place away from a hospital or away from a school, and ideally is taking place out in the community where it needs to. Because how every community addresses serious illness and end of life and care after death really reflects that community. I attended the cemetery committee meeting last week, and I gotta tell you, it was great because we were sitting around a table talking about this stuff, and everybody wanted to. They weren't just being polite and tolerating me and waiting for the next thing. Because it's an uncomfortable topic, it absolutely is. But there's a lot that can come out of, can come out of that. So it's an invitation to you and through you to the town, or to the structure of the town, but it's also an invitation to you as individuals. Because we all have spouses, siblings, parents, children, and this touches us. Serious illness, Alzheimer's specifically, it's hard to look very far without finding someone who hasn't been touched by it. So all of us as individuals have something to gain by bringing the conversation out in the open and really in keeping it going. There'll be more to come, I just got the artwork for the promotional materials, we're starting to do some canvassing.
Do you have the dates already ranked?
Yes, yes, so.
So is this all in October, October second, eighteenth, and thirty first?
The second, the eighteenth, and the thirty first, right, and that's been the approach from the start. I mean, I'm bound kind of by the speaker's availability and commitments. And that'll be the focus certainly of the local promotional materials is, this is the place, this is the time, here's how to register, because it is a registration required.
Is it an open meeting? I mean, you, you gave me a number, and that's important to note.
Yeah.
Because there are quorums that could then be unintentionally formed attending. If it's, in other words, if it's at somebody's home.
Right.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm seeing a cap, which would be natural, I mean, not everybody has a home that could.
Yeah, capacity of the house.
Town meeting.
Yep.
But that therefore changes the, you know, the open meeting from a public perspective.
Well, you're right that it's not in a public space, the doors are open, come in if you choose to, don't, right. Yeah, so it does, it, it, it is more of, I, I call it invitation. But if someone came and said, hey, I heard about this, I'm interested, then that would be fine too.
Right, exactly, that's my.
So maybe I'm more like a high school graduation or a college graduation, I mean, that's how I'm thinking of it when I'm thinking of the scale and how to lay it out.
Right, but when you invited this select board and by, through us, all the other boards, I just, I saw a.
Oh, yeah, no, I didn't wanna do anything like that.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Anybody else move on to liaison court? Again, Linda?
I attended the Jerome site visit that was open to the public to, for the initial layout of the recreation plan, and there was a very hot evening, but it was well worth being there to, to do the sidewalk and hear the potential plans for the, the site. There were good questions from people, both about the recreation plan and also about housing. I also attended a CPC meeting, and they, this was their second informational meeting, and they had, I think, thirteen town projects, which, most of which we've already heard about. And they also had an additional project from the library corporation for their new campaign in that building. And the deadline is September twenty first for the CPC application, so there's still may be others that come in. I attended a Concord Housing Authority meeting, they were discussing some of the housing related issues on the table right now, including the juror property and, and other opportunities. And they were looking forward to a joint meeting, I think, with all the housing groups later this month, if I remember correctly. I, along with other people, attended Ag Day, that was a wonderful event, as always. And just before this meeting tonight, I attended the Council on Aging. And they're, they're looking for an additional member for the Council on Aging Board. So if anyone is interested, please get, get your green card in. They spent, they covered a number of things, but they spent the majority of time talking about the ways in which issues for the Council on Aging and seniors in town are represented in the long range plan, including emphasis on the demographic, increasing demographic of seniors in town and how that's, we're gonna have to, their point of view is that people, all the towns, committees in towns are gonna have to be constantly reminded of that in terms of how that impacts the work that they're doing. And they were, and they also commented on housing options, including those in the community who want to age in place and the resources that might be necessary for them, as well as auxiliary housing opportunities. And that concludes my.
You were busy though.
Yes.
Well, I, I have no official liaison, but what I wanted to stress, Tom had mentioned the educational program that we're gonna be doing here on October twentieth with participation from the town clerk, the town moderator, and the Chair of the Select Board. And that would be terrific, I'd like to thank the Ag Committee and the Rec Department and other town committees for all the work they did to make the Ag Fair really nice. And that was, I was gonna mention it, that was a dog event. The place was crawling with dogs, it was great. And we got about ten, I think, green cards. Thanks a lot to Jane bringing along her new puppy. Very attractive in getting people to our, our table. I also wanted to say that our friends from Nani, our sister city in Japan, will be visiting us again at the end of October. And I think in the townhouse, they're gonna be meeting with hopefully the town manager and whomever from the Select Board on, so I think it's October thirtieth, I'll get the, it's, as you know, they just had a significant earthquake.
Yeah.
In Hokkaido, but it was not near Nani, it was spread to the north, but nevertheless, it was a pretty disastrous one. And then a plug, I've, I got from Andrew a hard copy of the long range plan. And while I'd seen a lot of it from Red Hot, online, I had the actual report, it was, it's just really impressive. So if you folks ought to get a copy of that and take a look at it, it's really impressive documents, so the committee should be very proud of us.
What can be purchased for fifty-two dollars?
Yes.
Or free online.
Free online, yeah, in color, it's just, it's just.
And I think there's copies in the library.
I find it easier if I've got something, online is fun, but I can't go, you know, back and forth as, as easily.
There's something different about, you know, reading sequentially on a screen and then having this thing in your hand. It was, it was really impressive document, so.
I attended the Board of Assessors meeting, and I'm always impressed by how complicated, actually, it all is in terms of trying to come up with a rational, fair system for the, assessing the different regions and making sure that it kind of all balances out. There were, they break it down according to the style of the property, the location, the size, the lot size, the sales price, all sorts of different ways, and fortunately, it sounds as if taxes will be going up, but they won't be going up in a shocking amount. And I think that they are making, they did go into the executive session regarding the means test senior exemption applications. I believe they ended up with sixty of them. And so they are working on that, and I think that that will lead them, since it's the first year they're doing it, it'll be interesting to see how that goes forward, but they've got a very interesting group because it requires a certain amount of specialized knowledge beyond that committee and understand what's going on. And one of the members had attended, I believe he said it was a forty hour workshop to get down.
And again, these are all volunteer committees, which is just one of the amazing things about our town.
And I think there was an aspect of it which also was in its employment area, but only.
It's still forty hours.
Yeah, only an aspect, exactly, and, and he paid for it, so. But they do great work, I think they're gonna be coming.
24?
24, yeah. One of the issues that they have is with the senior means test, the amount of tax that residential property will have, because that has to come out of the residential property side, will be slightly higher than the commercial property. And that would increase each year. And the question is, then how do they kind of even that out? And they're, they're gonna be looking into that issue.
But if they had 60 applicants, I mean, of course, you don't know the nature of the tax builder, but my recollection is they were estimating it could be up to 125 that they could have received. So, 60 sounds like a pretty good first-year number, but probably isn't high enough to trigger the, because it's a max, remember? One apple, 1% is a cap. So, I suspect, I don't, don't know, but suspect that we won't hit the cap then on that. So, that's interesting.
That was mine.
And I'll use that as a segue to, while listening, to reporting on the Taxuree Committee, because this is one of the committees that it will be dovetailing its work with the Senior Means Test, as well as the Hugh Carville Fund. They're getting, ready to do a joint townwide solicitation for funds. Again, this, this committee has been available, I'm not actually sure how long it's been. Is it about 15 years longer?
At least, at least.
Stan Blas.
Stan Blas. Well, actually, I think it's now.
Somebody else's.
Helena Long's committee. But, point is, it's one of the many ways that Concord's more affluent member, homeowners and residents are able to, to assist those who live in Concord who can't meet all of the increasing tax burdens. And it always amazes me, the generosity of, of folks in Concord. And we are lucky to have this balancing act right now of, you know, the, the different points of.
Jane, today, one of the issues was with this new tax relief coming online, that this would perhaps relieve some of the burden procedures, which hopefully will. And was there any discussion of whether their solicitation would be broadened beyond tax relief to provide for general relief for folks, or?
I've only seen a draft of the solicitation at this point, so I'm not entirely clear. And I know that they're waiting to discuss this with the Hugh Carville.
Yeah.
And then I think that they're meeting Wednesday. So I think this is still, I'm being a little premature in complimenting, but this is a solicitation that will be going out.
Will be at the Hugh Carville.
Right, but it's not finalized, so.
And then the Tax Fairness Committee is meeting, I think, this Friday. That's the committee that TDO is.
Right, right. So we've got these three different points of effort.
Yeah.
To assist those who are burdened by our, our taxes. I also attended the NRC's most recent meeting, and not to forget, because I often bury this, and I, I want, I would love to figure out a way that we can maybe promote regularly on our town website, the number of standing commissions and committees that are looking for, that have holes. Because sometimes those holes exist for periods of time, and the NRC, there is a hole, and it's, you know, in a sense, it's preventing a longstanding member from going off the committee, and, and that's not fair. He's more than served his, his time.
Are those committees flexible in terms of the dates that they need, or the, the kind of each, you know, weeknight? Because I, I had received from somebody who's interested, and then I got a follow-up saying that he couldn't do it because they had Wednesday nights, and he had another commitment.
I, I would imagine they're pretty set, because this is town staff, and these are not, these are not.
People have been on the credit every year.
For everybody cares. Yeah, this is, that would be sort of like saying, do you want to be on the select board? Well, Monday nights don't work for me, but when the select board changes its night, I'll be happy to run. The options were there. Thank you to the team that went up. Of course, the thing is, Tom is, Tom and I are the only ones that are up, that will have the benefit of this in their third, their second term. But the NRC did then vote to approve its 50-foot.
No build?
No build zone update. And there, there was a discussion of the 430 Old Bedford Road Noticeant Application. Interestingly, it's not going to, it was to be continued to the 26th, yet there was a discussion about it at the NRC, and there's clearly a lot of concern about the impact of the proposed eight, eight buildings or eight units. And I know that there'll be, there may have actually already been the site visit, but the site visit was under discussion, and whether or not it would be an open meeting, which it was. But it was also a good place to remind everybody that that's not a meeting, that the public, there's not, there's no debate engaged. This is a fact, just like most, all site visits. It's a fact-fighting tour. It's not a, not a public meeting that's just moved its venue. And then, really, it was a, a lot of cleanup. And I would say the, the media issues are coming. They weren't necessarily on, on the docket for this. MAGIC, our regional coordinating, community man advisory group on inter-local coordination, met. And while I have to, own the fact that I had to duck out for another meeting, we elected our new officers, and it was discussion of our regional biking/walking tours. I have a phenomenal map, which is just, you know, it's really amazing when you look at the, what we have access to in this area for biking/walking trails in our 16 different communities. It makes me want to connect all the, all of them. And I, there, there's an effort to do that. There's also discussion about the taxi initiative, and I know that that's coming up in the, in our, the Council on Aging in February, taking the lead on that from MAGIC. And I believe it just received a grant for that. I'm always, once again, I always look, I always note the number of opportunities Concord has, you know, potential to apply for grants for. And this is certainly one. And then we discussed just other forms of partner exchange. But if anybody's ever interested, it's always a fascinating meeting. It's a way of finding out what our, our neighbors are doing and how we're working together. I think too, too often we get stuck in, in more contentious, you know, conversations, and really, we're all one big community. So. And then the other meetings were the Bruce Farm Real Trail, which I, again, was not able to meet, because it met at the same time as the NRC, or maybe it was the HDC. But the one point of interest that I thought was fascinating, as somebody who's using the Bruce Farm Real Trail as it ends in Acton, is that SoBarry has now gone to 100%. So that, that next phase will be joining. The West Concord Junction Council on.
Cultural Council.
Cultural Council, thank you. I was losing my word. Also met, and October 20th is going to be West Concord Day. So, that's gonna be a busy day. And there'll be a number of bands playing in a, in quite a few places. There's a big effort to engage the artist population, as there have been in, in the past, but I think this is really getting far more coordinated. And I look forward to seeing how Concord Center's cultural district comes in. And I want to give a shout-out to the Chamber of Commerce, because they've got very involved in both efforts, and I think that's.
Right, yeah.
Wonderful. And then finally, the HDC, the Historic District Commission voted and moved forward with the final lighting proposals for our new supermarket. And I have been discussed it at some length in previous meetings.
They're gonna have torches, or?
I, I think they found a, you know, a point. There were, I think, the final, the point of, to be, to be worked out was the signs, the actual signage lighting, because there are now a number of signs. But, you know, again, we all, sometimes these meetings can get very hot under the collar, but we live in a town that has benefited from strong wetlands protection and strong historic districts experience and, and knowledge. And if you look at, going back to the Long Range Plan, you look at where the Town Survey puts our greatest asset, you know, the things that we hold most dearly, you know, our, our historic nature and our historic image and, and values, as well as open space. Our two of, and our, our two most, most valued pieces, so. That's enough.
That's all?
That's all.
Thank you, Jane.
I need to come up to my.
The, the NRC Walk of 430 Old Bedford Earth, yeah.
And you, I'm sorry, I don't.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I'm, 468 Old Bedford Road, just up the street from there, is, they're gonna be walking 8 o'clock on Friday morning. It was a request that the, because the whole NRC committee had not actually seen the prop site. The planning board had done a walk, but not the NRC. And so, again, is to look at the site and the issues around it, so, just so I'd let you know.
Miscellaneous correspondence. Does anybody have anything to report?
Just the Eagle Scout letters.
You wish?
The Eagle Scout.
Already did that, yeah. I also, though, I did get a letter from Colonel Ellsworth of the Hanscom Air Force Base, just basically saying that he looks forward to working with the select board in the town of Concord, and that invites us and fellow select board members to identify and share opportunities for working together in the future. A very nice letter, and so I thought I would just respond thanking him for reaching out. So I guess we now move to committee nominations.
Right. I move to nominate Betsy Levinson of 124 Nishoba Road to the Concord Local Cultural Committee Council.
And I don't think we have to vote on nominations, so we'll move now to appointments.
I move to appoint Lucy Rosborough of Roseboro of 56 Elm Street to the Hugh Carville Trust Committee for an unexpired term to expire May 31st, 2019. Ruth Lauer of 100 Kaiser Road, number 20, 323, to the PEG Access Advisory Committee for a term to expire May 31st, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I guess now we just can move to a adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for attending.